All right, September 2nd, 2025 City of Vandelia Council Meeting is now called to order. We'll begin with a moment of reflection, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, council, you've had an opportunity to review the study session meeting minutes along with the council meeting minutes of July 21st and the council study session meeting minutes and the council meeting minutes of August 18th. Are there any comments or corrections? Being none, they stand approved. And that brings us to Communications, Petitions and Awards where we have a couple introductions, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Althouse.
Well, thank your honor. It's an honor and a privilege to welcome, introduce our new Parks and Recreation Director, so Alicia McCracken. If you'll step to the podium, I'm going to read her bio as though most of you already know who Alicia is. She's been here at Vandelia a long, long time. She was born and raised here in the Vandelia community. She graduated from Vandelia Butler High School in 2001, then attended THE Ohio State University, where she earned a degree in Sports and Leisure Studies in 2005. Alicia began her journey with the City of Vandelia Parks and Recreation Department in 1997, working part-time in various youth programs. She was also one of the original part-time employees at the Recreation Center when it opened in 2001. In 2007, Alicia transitioned into a full-time role as Recreation Coordinator over Athletics. She was promoted to Recreation Facility Manager in 2018, and in 2024 became the Recreation Superintendent. Alicia lives in Butler Township with her husband Jerome and their two daughters, Kinsley and Taylan. Is that right? She looks forward to leading the department, continuing to create recreational opportunities for the community through all of Vandelia's outstanding amenities. And so it is my privilege to welcome and introduce our new Parks and Recreation Director, Alicia McCracken.
All right, welcome.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Erin, come right on up.
Not as old as her.
So Erin as well. Erin Messengers lived in Vandelia since 2001. He graduated from Butler High School in 2014, and Erin received his bachelor's degree in Recreation Management from Ohio University in 2018. And he just completed his master's program in Public Administration from Rice State University this August. Kudos for being top of your class. Erin has worked for the City of Vandelia for eight years now. He started his career as the Athletics Intern in the summer of 2017, then became the Program's Coordinator in 2018, then transitioned to Recreational Facility Manager in 2024, and has now stepped into the role of Recreation Superintendent. Erin is excited with his new, for his new role and looks forward to continuing to serve the Vandelia community through top-tier recreation experiences. He's done a great job expanding the number of programs out there at recreational facility, and so we're excited to have him in this new role. Welcome.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate it. Couldn't have two finer individuals. Welcome. All right, we have no public hearing, and that brings us to comments from interested citizens. So if anyone would like to make a comment, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. We further ask those who speak to please follow the etiquette of communicating with respect to others. And as a courtesy, please try to stay on topic with your statements while you address council. And as a reminder, this is not a forum for arguments or debates. And in an effort to give all citizens an opportunity to express their thoughts and concerns, we'd like you to keep your comments as brief as possible, and we would like to limit them till five minutes. If anyone would like to make a comment?
Hi.
Go ahead.
Thomas Schrak, 1182 Greystone Circle. My point to be here tonight was to ask what had changed since 2022. I think you guys have kind of said the same thing about building the townhomes over there. I'm not against, like you were saying about growth. Single-family homes would be more appropriate, I believe, there. Plus, it would keep the number down. I do live right, right at the end of Greystone, Headstone and Greystone right there. So they would be coming straight up the street. There's a lot of, lot of younger families now in our neighborhood. It has actually changed. I'm probably one of the older Jim and Ed here also. So it is changing to smaller kids. They don't always stay in the street. They are riding their bikes around. So that could be a danger for all the people driving through that neighborhood. So, and also on the sound, I can hear 70. The airport access is a little lower, but 70 is, does, if I'm on the upper level and have the windows open, you can't hear it in my, it's not bad, but you can't hear it. So they would be, they'd be like a quarter or a half mile closer. So they would hear tremendously. So.
Good to know. Thanks.
Thank you.
This is on. Okay. My name is James Test. I go by Jim. Last name is spelled T-E-S-T like a spelling test in school. I live at 1228 Greystone Circle and I'm proudly a resident of Copperfield. I'm not happy with what's going on here. You guys turned it down two years ago, or three, for good reasons. The appearance of the proposed condos does not match the neighborhoods that Vandelia City Council has approved over the years, such as Timberwinds. And I know there's some people here may live in Timberwinds. Could you imagine a project like this on Mulberry Road being suggested being near Timberwinds? No. You know it. There's Ashberry Farms, and you guys have done a great job over the years of putting in, approving Timberwinds to be approved, Ashberry Farms, the Reserve at Park Place, and of course Copperfield. The main reason I'm against this, I'm selfish. I'm worried about my property values of my home, along with all the other residents at Copperfield. It's not, this is serious stuff. If you look closely at that map of the aerial view looking down on that project, it looks like sardines packed in a small 11-acre spot. I'm very much in favor. If you asked me right now, right here on the spot, what would I prefer? Single-family homes. These fellows that want to utilize this bit of ground, this 11 acres, in a way, I don't blame them. We all like to make money, and they're after the projects. And so they have to pack more houses or units on that to justify their investment. I'm sorry. I'm not for sale. On traffic, we all know Mulberry's going to take a hit. But the entrance to Copperfield off of Mulberry, it's Headstone. It's a straight shot out of their projected exit from that community, right north through Greystone Circle. And why would they use that? When these residents ever feel like they want to enjoy the sports complex over there in Stone Quarry? You know they're taking a shortcut right through Greystone Circle either way. So I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak before you. And let it go with that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your comments.
Sorry, I'm not used to public speaking, so you'll have to forgive me. But I appreciate the chance to speak in front of you. I'm here. I live on Greystone Circle. My name is Sherri Swartz. I'm in the corner on Greystone, and I have had issues with people like speeding around the corner, you know, it almost hitting my van. But I also am a mom to young kids, and I am really worried about the traffic coming from that community, you know, with the kids that play in the street, ride their bikes. They're not going to be able to do that anymore. And it does concern me. So.
All right. Well, thank you. Thank you for your comments. All right. Is there anyone else that'd like to make a comment?
Most of my questions. I'm Ed Kelly. I live on 1272 Bramley Court in Copperfield. I've been there over 20 years, and it's a marvelous place to live. And coming to Vandelia has been a great place to live also. Most of my questions have been answered, and one still remains. And I don't know if there's anything you guys can do about it. What happens with these condos and they start renting them out? That's, that's means things will lower down a little bit. So what do we do? What, what do you guys do? Can you do anything? And the traffic is going to be bad going to the rec center. It's going to make it sort of a mess now. We do have some speedy drivers that live back in Copperfield that come in there, boom, and go back there. So thanks for letting me talk, and thank you.
All right. Thank you.
I'm David Williams. I live at 1101 Greystone Circle. I guess my biggest thing is how many have they even projected how many new children will be in these facilities and in these homes? I mean, has anyone looked at our most recent schools, like the fact that we've got trailers for Smith, and we've got the busing issues and all the other stuff? So I look at how many more kids could be added to the district right now. So something to consider.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right. Is there anyone else that'd like to make a comment? Not going to do this again until the 15th. All right, we'll move on. All right, we'll move on to the City Managers' Report. Mr. Althouse.
Thank your honor. A couple information items. First of all, Sister Cities of Vandelia Oktoberfest will take place this Friday and Saturday, September 5th and 6th. While they'll have their annual Oktoberfest at the Vandelia Sports Complex. For more information, you can visit their website at VandeliaSisterCities.org. Second item is large debris drop-off is this Saturday, September 13th. The City of Vandelia offers Vandelia residents free large debris drop-off from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Public Works Garage. Proof of residency is required.
Excuse me, Mr. Althouse. Can we define debris and what that can and cannot consist of?
Yeah. So it can be large trash items, you know, but it cannot, cannot be like large refrigerators or, or washers, dryers. Large appliances cannot be taken.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure thing. Item three, there is a Touch a Truck event Saturday, September 13th. This is a free event held from 10:30 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Vandelia Sports Complex, where people of all ages can touch, climb, and marvel at the impressive lineup of large vehicles that will be on display.
All right. Thank you. All right. We have no action items or old business, and that brings us to our first resolution of this evening, that being Resolution 25-R-37. Mr. McDonald by title only.
A resolution authorizing an agreement with Sandy's Towing for towing and impounding services for the Division of Police.
Thank you. Mr. Althouse.
Thank your honor. The Division of Police enters into an agreement every two years with area companies to provide towing and impound services. On July 24th, 2025, bid notices were sent to four area towing companies for submission. The notice was also posted on the city website. Bids were received from Inglewood Truck Towing and Recovery and Sandy's Towing. On August 11th, 2025, the police department unsealed the bids received. Sandy's Towing offers a lower cost of passenger vehicle towing, $145 versus $195 at Inglewood. Flatbed towing, $145 versus $195 at Inglewood. Dead runs on passenger vehicles, $60 versus $97.50 at Inglewood. Passenger vehicle storage, which is $30 per day versus $35 per day at Inglewood. Heavy towing rates were lower for Inglewood towing in the 10,000 to 15,000 gross vehicle weight at 125 per hour versus 175 per hour in towing over 15,000 pounds, 225 per hour versus 355 per hour. Very few, very few toes requested by the police department are heavy towing. Both companies carry similar liability insurance thresholds and have the necessary storage and equipment availability to fulfill the towing and recovery needs of the Division of Police. Both companies offer towing services on vehicles owned by the Division of Police at no charge. Inglewood Storage Facility is more than five miles outside the City of Vandelia, while Sandy's Towing is located within the city limits. One of the bid specifications is that the storage facility used is within five miles of the corporate limits of Vandelia. Sandy's Towing is the only bid that met that standard. Since this is a service contract and costs are paid by the customer, there are no city funds budgeted. Chief Suker recommends the towing and impound services contract be awarded to Sandy's Towing. This agreement will be for two years and renewable for another two years if mutually agreed to by both the city and Sandy's Towing.
All right. Thank you. Can I have a motion?
Your honor, I'll move that we approve Resolution 24-R-37 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Lewis and a second by Councilwoman Forrest to approve Resolution 25-R-37 as presented. Call the roll.
Actually, there's, Ms. Avalotus Weaver had a question, but because of her voice, she has asked me to ask the question, and that is, is, is that the full invoice cost, including hookup, fuel charge, any day, hour, holidays? Has the issue we have complaints with cleaning up debris left behind on the sides of the street and in residence and business properties been resolved? And I can repeat any of those questions if needed.
The rates that are posted and given to us as part of the bid include all of their, there's no extra surcharges. It's those flat rates and those flat fees. Their hourly rates are all the same. Any issues that we have had with Sandy's Towing with debris cleanup at sites, if we do contact them, it's, it's resolved. There hasn't been any issues with that. And I don't know if I, I think I hit all of them, but.
Yep. All right. Thank you.
She gave the thumbs up.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Follak?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Avalotus Weaver?
That was a yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakeslee?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes. And the motion passes 6-0. All right. Next, we have Resolution 25-R-38.
A resolution authorizing the city manager, his designee, to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission State Capital Improvement and/or Local Transportation Improvement Programs, and authorizing additional action as necessary for the city to participate in such programs with respect to the Pool and Randalar North Ave Water Main Replacement Project.
Thank you. Mr. Althouse.
Thank your honor. The city is submitting an Ohio Public Works Commission grant application for the Pool and Randalar North Ave Water Main Replacement Project due September 10th, 2025. The project includes replacing water mains, fire hydrants, and service lines, followed by a full street resurfacing. The total project cost is estimated at $1,685,000, including $40,000 of in-house services. To enhance the competitiveness of our application and increase the likelihood of funding approval, we will be requesting $500,000, which is approximately 30% of the total cost, split equally between a $250,000 grant and a $250,000 0% interest loan over five years.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
I move that we approve Resolution 25-R-38 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Forrest and a second by Vice Mayor Blakeslee to approve Resolution 25-R-38 as presented. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Avalotus Weaver? Indicated yes. Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Follak?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakeslee?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes.
Thank you.
And the motion passes 6-0. Next, we have Resolution 25-R-39.
A resolution amending the Personnel Policies and Procedures Manual of the City of Vandelia.
Thank you. Mr. Althouse.
Thank your honor. The document provided is the City of Vandelia's 2025 Personnel Policies Manual developed by the Human Resources Department. This manual serves as a comprehensive reference for city staff, establishing clear policies, procedures, and expectations that guide workplace conduct and operations. Maintaining an up-to-date handbook is essential to ensure compliance with evolving employment laws, incorporate organizational changes, and reflect best, best practices in public sector management. Regular updates also help promote consistency, fairness, and transparency across all departments, ultimately supporting the city's mission in protecting both employees and the organization.
All right. Thank you. Can I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve Resolution 25-R-39.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Blakeslee and a second by Councilman Follak to approve Resolution 25-R-39 as presented. Are there any questions or comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Avalotus Weaver? Designated yes. Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Follak?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakeslee?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes. And the motion passes 6-0. All right. Next, we have Resolution 25-R-40.
A resolution awarding the bid for Robinette Park Splash Pad Project requested by Parks and Recreation to outdoor enterprises at the lowest and best bid price of $1,479,880.
Thank you. Mr. Althouse.
Thank your honor. The Parks and Recreation Department is recommending awarding the bid for Robinette Park Splash Pad Project to Double J Construction, Inc. of Inglewood, Ohio, as a result of their overall best bid proposal for the project. On August 15th, 2025, we publicly opened and read proposals received for the project advertised in the Daily Court Recorder on July 18th and 25th, 2025. This project will allow for the construction of a splash pad, shelter, and additional parking. This project is a continuation of developing Robinette Park into an inclusive place for residents to meet and recreate as indicated in the 2020 Vandelia Vision Comprehensive Plan, as well as the Community Input Key Findings section of the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Four contractors obtained the bid package through Bid Express, and all four contractors submitted bids for the project. Bids range from $1,479,880 to $1,835,000. Funding for the project includes federal grant funds and the amount of $400,000 in city capital budget funds.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
Your honor, I'll move to approve Resolution 25-R-40 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Follak and a second by Councilman Lewis to approve Resolution 25-R-40 as presented. Are there any questions or comments?
It's a lot of money.
We want a splash pad.
That's correct.
All right. Call the roll.
There appears to be some confusion here. The lowest bid was Double J Construction, and that is what is on the printed resolution. But the one that I just read has outdoor enterprises. So that, the title of what I read does not appear to be correct.
Oh, oh, oh. Sorry.
That's, that's okay.
No.
The, the resolution itself appears to be correct, because that says a resolution to award the bid for Robinette Park Splash Pad Project requested by Parks and Recreation to Double J Construction, blah, blah, blah. But for the, the one that is on my sheet, unfortunately, has an error on it. So.
Who made that?
So do you need me to make a motion?
I don't think, but let's start all over.
Your honor, I'll make the motion to approve Resolution 25-R-40, requested by Parks and Recreation to Double J Construction of Inglewood at the lowest and best price of $1,479,880.
Second.
All right. I have a motion by Councilman Follak and a second by Councilman Lewis to approve Resolution 25-R-40 to Double J Construction. I'll leave it at that. Are there any more comments on that? Call the roll.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Follak?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Avalotus Weaver? Designated yes. Vice Mayor Blakeslee?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes. And the motion passes 6-0. Next, we have Resolution 25-R-41.
Well, we seem to be on a roll, because this particular resolution has in the whereas clause that it was presented to council at the last meeting, which we moved it to this meeting. So there is actually a misstatement in the whereas clause. So that I would ask that if council desires to pass this, that the motion be to approve the resolution as amended. And again, the only amendment is the whereas clause that says this was presented to council on August 18th should be this was presented to council on September 2nd. Oh, Jerry. I'm sorry. I'm just a messenger, kind of. Anyway, Resolution R, 25-R-41, a resolution approving amendments to the City of Vandelia Emergency Operations Plan.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Althouse.
Thank your honor. The city's Emergency Management Work Group has conducted a review of the city's EOP and made several revisions. Chief Follak, as presented tonight at the council workshop, provide you with an overview of the process and revisions, and a resolution adopting the revised Emergency Operations Plan will be on tonight's council agenda.
All right. Thank you. Can I have a motion?
Your honor, I'll move to approve Resolution 25-R-41 with the amendment of the second whereas at the September 2nd, 2025, council study session, city council reviewed the revisions.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Follak and a second by Vice Mayor Blakeslee to approve Resolution 25-R-41 as amendment, amended as noted. Are there any questions or comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Follak?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Avalotus Weaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakeslee?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes. And the motion passes 6-0. We have no ordinances in the first reading. Is that correct, Jerry? And that brings us to ordinances in the second reading, where we have Ordinance 25-17.
An ordinance repealing and replacing in its entirety Chapter 1044 of the Vandelia Codified Ordinances titled Sewers Generally.
Thank you. Mr. Althouse.
Thank your honor. The city's Emergency Management Work Group has conducted a review of the city's EOP and disregard that. Let me start the next one. As part of the routine OE, OEP-A permit review, updates to Chapter 1044 of our sewer use ordinance are needed to align with state regulations and current city and TCA permits. Similar updates are being made by TIP City in Huber Heights. The change focuses on improving documentation of industrial pretreatment standards. Adoption is recommended to maintain compliance.
All right. Thank you. And since this is an ordinance in the second reading, we'll open a public hearing. So if anyone would like to make a comment, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record and your comment. Being none, we'll close the public hearing. Can I have a motion?
Your honor, I'll move that we approve Ordinance 25-17 in its second reading.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Lewis and a second by Councilwoman Fairst to approve Ordinance 25-17 in its second reading. Are there any questions or comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Avalotus Weaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Follak?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakeslee?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes. And the motion passes 6-0. Next, we have Ordinance 25-18 in its second reading.
An ordinance approving a PUD major amendment and revised preliminary plan for Sub Area B of the Redwood Vandelia Development owned by Redwood Vandelia in the Planned Unit Development District PC.
Thank your honor. It closes a memorandum for Mr. Hammett wherein the applicant Todd Foley of PUD Design and on behalf of Redwood Vandelia request a major amendment to an existing planned unit development and approval of a revised PUD preliminary plan. The request involves two parcels totaling 27.59 acres plus or minus located along the east side of Webster Street at Park Center Drive in the City of Vandelia. If approved, the proposed amendment would facilitate the construction of 59 multifamily residential units as part of Phase 3 of the Redwood Vandee Development. The property is owned by Redwood Vandelia.
All right. Thank you. And again, since this is an ordinance in its second reading, we'll open a public hearing. So if anyone would like to comment on this particular ordinance, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record and any comment you may have. All right. Being none, we'll close the public hearing. Can I have a motion?
I move that we approve Ordinance 25-18 in its second reading.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Fairst and a second by Vice Mayor Blakeslee to approve Ordinance 25-18 in its second reading. Are there any questions or comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Avalotus Weaver? Voted yes. Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Council, sorry. Councilmember Follak?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakeslee?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes. And the motion passes 6-0. Next, we have Ordinance 25-19 in its second reading.
An ordinance approving a planned unit development, preliminary development plan, and associated zoning map change for land generally located at 600 Corporate Center Drive.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Althouse.
Thank your honor. It closes a memorandum for Mr. Hammett wherein the applicant Jeff Putoff, Public Engineer of Choice One Engineering, on behalf of D.R. Horton, request a change of zoning as previously established by the zoning ordinance of the City of Vandelia. The request involves one parcel totaling 14.494 acres plus or minus. The request involves one parcel totaling 14.494 acres plus or minus located at the south end of Corporate Center Drive in the City of Vandelia. As proposed, the subject property would be rezoned from O Office District to a residential planned unit development with associated preliminary development plan. The property is owned by the Hague Corporation.
All right, thank you. And again, since this is an ordinance in its second reading, we'll open a public hearing, so if anyone would like to comment on this ordinance, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and any comment you may have. Being none, we'll close the public hearing. Can I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve ordinance 25-19 in the second reading.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Follak and a second by Councilwoman Fairst to approve ordinance 25-19 in its second reading. Are there any comments?
Just a quick comment, which is that at our, in the first reading, we entered an amendment or an addition, additional condition, which is now part of Exhibit B of the ordinance, which talks about the 12-yard setback, so that's already included.
Thank you. Call the roll.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Follak?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Avalotus Weaver?
Said yes.
Vice Mayor Blakeslee?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes. And the motion passes six zero. Next we have ordinance 25-20 in its second reading.
An ordinance rezoning 5.219 acres of land located at 3675 Wise Road from Office Industrial Park to Highway Business and from Office Industrial Park to Industrial, two different parcels, and amending the zoning map of the city.
Thank you. Mr. Oldhouse?
Thank you, Your Honor. Encloses a memorandum for Mr. Hammett wherein the applicant Richard Drake of Drake Architecture, on behalf of R&amp;R Tacker Oil Company, request a change of zoning as previously established by the zoning ordinance of the City of Vandelia. The request involves three parcels totaling 5.219 acres plus or minus located at 3675 Wise Road in the City of Vandelia. As proposed, the subject properties would be rezoned from the OIP, which is Office Industrial Park District, to the I Industrial and Highway Business Districts.
All right, thank you. And again, since this is a ordinance in its second reading, we'll open a public hearing. If anyone would like to make a comment, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Being none, I'll close the public hearing. Can I have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve ordinance 25-20 in the second reading.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Blakeslee and a second by Councilman Follak to approve ordinance 25-20 in its second reading. Are there any questions or comments from council?
Just a quick comment, in that I think since I've been on council, this is the third or fourth proposal that we've had for this parcel of land, and I think that this use and final development of this vacant property that's been kind of problematic will be a good addition and fit in well with that area, so, thank you.
I'd agree with that. Call the roll.
Councilmember Follak?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Avalotus Weaver?
Voted yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakeslee?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes. And the motion passes six zero. Next we have an emergency ordinance, that being ordinance 25-21.
An ordinance to revise appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Vandelia, Montgomery County, Ohio, during the calendar year ending December 31, 2025, and amending ordinance 24-24 and declaring an emergency.
All right, thank you. Mr. Oldhouse?
Thank you, Your Honor. Mrs. Leiter will request approval of the following supplemental appropriation ordinances for the following reasons. In the general fund for court, $15,000 increase appropriations to cover the unexpected increase in postage costs related to new court legislation passed requiring all payable citations to receive 30 days' continuance notice if they fail to appear. In police operations, $5,000 increase appropriations to cover the unexpected increase in vehicle repair and maintenance costs of police vehicles. In police support services, $6,415 increase the appropriations to cover the unexpected increase in costs related to the Humane Society Community Cap Program. In the golf fund, course maintenance, $180,000 to increase the appropriations to cover the unexpected additional cost, rock removal, related to the golf course irrigation system project. This amount is 10% of the original bid and was included as a contingency, will only be used as needed. In the water fund, $1,125,000 transfer and reduction of appropriations related to the Damian-Soder-Ramonos and the Sales-North Water Main Replacement and Resurfacing Project. The project was budgeted in the General Water Department account, Fund 350, and because the project was subsequently awarded OPWC funding, a transfer is necessary to reclassify the expense in the correct amount to OPWC Department 3, or Fund 332. And then finally, OPWC was receiving the funds, $1,125,000, related to the same topic we just talked about with the water main replacement and resurfacing project.
All right, thank you. All right, since this is a emergency ordinance, we'll open a public hearing, so if anyone would like to make a comment, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and any comment. Being none, we'll close the public hearing. Can I have a motion?
I move that we approve ordinance 25-21 as an emergency.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Fairst and a second by Councilman Follak to approve ordinance 25-21 as an emergency. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Avalotus Weaver?
Voted yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Follak?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakeslee?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes. And the motion passes six zero. And that brings us to reports from boards and commissions where we have a conditional use at 3675 Wise Road. Mr. Oldhouse?
Thank you, Your Honor. The applicant Richard Drake of Drake Architecture and on behalf of R&amp;R Tacker Oil Company requests conditional use approval of two parcels totaling 1.814 acres plus or minus for the property located at 3675 Wise Road. The proposal involves establishing a truck facility in the I Industrial Zoning District. On July 8th, 2025, the Planning Commission voted 3 to 0 to recommend approval with three conditions. A fourth condition was proposed at the July 21st, 2025 study session and is included in the staff memorandum for council's consideration. These four conditions are, number one, no conditional use approval shall be effective for this site until the effective date of legislation approving the rezoning of this site to Industrial District. Number two, all parcels upon which the proposed conditional use shall be conducted must be consolidated before any building permit is issued for this site. Number three, all required roadway improvements shall be completed to the standards of and under the supervision of the Director of Public Service. And number four, the facility shall not be constructed or operated in a manner that facilitates overnight stays for drivers, employees, or others. Lodging in or about the premises or sleeping in trucks is prohibited.
All right, we don't need a public hearing on this one, so can I have a motion?
Real quick, can I ask a question for law director? On the condition one, for the approval shall be effective for the site until the effective date of the legislation, is that the date we pass it or when it goes into effect?
I'm sorry, I gotta get to there. Okay, where were we? Your question?
The condition number one on the staff memorandum says no conditional use approval shall be effective for this site until the effective, I guess both are effective, doesn't matter about passing it, right?
Yeah, well typically, well, legislation is effective, ordinance is 30 days, resolution's immediately. Conditional use permits are typically, once they are granted, you grant it tonight, it's there. I think what that condition is, it doesn't take effect until the 30 days when the rezoning takes effect.
Gotcha, thank you. Your Honor, I'll make a motion to approve the conditional use, PC 25-0010 at 3675 Wise Road, conditional use with the four conditions stipulated by Planning Commission and Staff.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Follak and a second by Vice Mayor Blakeslee to approve the conditional use of PC 25-0010 at 3675 Wise Road with the four conditions noted. Are there any comments or questions? Call the roll.
Councilmember Avalotus Weaver? Votes in the affirmative. I thought I'd be fancy with the last one. Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Follak?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakeslee?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes. Motion passes six zero. All right. Well, and that brings us to council comments, and we're going to begin tonight with Mr. McDonald.
I just, this was fun. Lots of stuff tonight, but that's all I had.
Thanks for staying awake. Mr. Oldhouse?
Oops. Just want to congratulate Alyssa and Aaron for their new roles. I've worked with them for many years, I've always been impressed with their professionalism. I think it's outstanding to have two individuals who are hometown graduates and residents that have moved into these leadership roles, so congratulations to both of them.
Thank you. Councilmember Follak?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Fairst?
Did you say me?
Yes.
I'd like, first I'd like to excuse Councilwoman Dugan for her to all meetings this evening, and I would like to echo Mr. Oldhouse's congratulations. It's, I think we've all watched you guys work and have appreciated all the effort both of you put into your jobs, and you are the kind of employees that Vandelia wants to have and deserves, and so thank you and congratulations. And that's all, thank you.
Thank you.
There was a motion made, but no second and no vote.
I'll second the motion to excuse Councilmember Dugan.
No, you weren't.
I was looking left for a motion.
Oh, for Mrs. Dugan, I'm sorry.
Do I have a second?
Yeah. I'll second it.
All in favor? Say aye.
Aye. He did, he looked this, he.
I looked this way and.
Second.
You guys were lost. All right. Are we gonna, can we do sign language here for Ms. Avalotus?
I am, I am the voice of Councilmember Avalotus Weaver, and I am prepared. The council member would like to congratulate Alyssa and Aaron. She has watched both of you for many years grow into your roles of leadership, and she is so glad to see where you are today. She feels Vandelia Park and Recreation Department is in great hands and is headed in a great direction.
Thank you, Ms. Avalotus Weaver.
She has no further comments.
Councilmember Lewis?
Well, congratulations to both Aaron and Alyssa, and yes, the Parks and Rec Department is in great hands. Also wishing good luck to the sister cities for the upcoming Oktoberfest. I hope it goes very, very well.
Thank you. Did I skip you? Vice Mayor Blakeslee?
Well, I would be remiss if I didn't mention to both Alyssa and Aaron, congratulations as I went through that last meeting, and of course, you are where you should be, and I think Vandelia's better for it. So, looking for great things where you're coming from. In fact, I was hoping that you would be here with the popsicles, the Popsicle Patrol, come on. I said that last meeting, and like deaf ears, I was expecting at least, you know, coming in with popsicles. So, maybe next time, right? So, great. And yes, and come to the Oktoberfest Friday and Saturday, and it's the Vandelia's Block Party. It's great food, the typical German food, and the beer, and soft drinks, and anything else. There's one member in our group that is just super excited about Friday night because they have Highland cows, and apparently this is a thing, that they like to pet these Highland cows and get their pictures. I don't look at me like that. It's just, whatever.